I'll now call the meeting of the Dunsmere City Council to order on November 4th, 2021. We could, Councilman Deutsch, this is live, so.
Thank you.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the infinite.
Both Councilwoman Casey and Councilwoman Kaisler requested an absence from this meeting and they're newly excused. Can we do a roll call, Wendy?
Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Mayor Bryan.
Here.
All right, welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We do have special opportunity to welcome our new interim city manager, Jefferson Spencer. This is his first meeting at the helm. Thank you so much, Jefferson, for joining us, we really appreciate it. Meetings are where all the fun happens, so we look forward to working with you over the next several months. I have to address something that has occurred in our community. And to simplify things, I have prepared a statement to say things exactly how I feel they ought to be said, given the circumstances. I've heard from a number of people concerning an unfortunate situation that occurred last week in Dunsmere, and I have a brief statement to share with our community. Last week, according to the Siskiyou County Sheriff, Councilman Big Dave Kaisler was arrested and charged with felony counts of domestic violence with false imprisonment and a misdemeanor for destroying a communication device. He has requested and has been approved for a leave of absence from this meeting. Effective immediately, Councilman Kaisler will be stepping back from his work on the City of Dunsmere committees until the criminal investigation into this case has been concluded. I would like to remind everyone that our council chambers is not the venue where guilt or innocence is determined, but I do understand that the behavior of our city leaders is important to the community. I would like to thank our brave sheriff's deputies. If you could pass along the deputies involved, I'd appreciate it. Sergeant Lieutenant Chrissy. I'd like to thank our brave deputies for responding to this event and reiterate our unwavering support of law enforcement in our town. The City of Dunsmere does not support violence, either on our streets or in the home. I encourage everyone up here at council and in the community to respect the important work in which the city is presently engaged. We must, as a council, remain focused on our stewardship of the city. I guess just to follow up on that statement, which I think says it all very succinctly, this is clearly a time for Councilman Kaisler to proceed with his legal proceedings. The focus of this city council is to conduct city business in an effective, righteous manner. I would appreciate us to not bring up details of this case in these chambers. It is not the appropriate place, we hold no jurisdiction over the guilt or innocence of somebody. So if we could let the courts take care of their course, we will react to their findings, not as a city council directly so much, as a community. We expect our city leaders to be good exemplary citizens and there's going to be a lot involved with this case. So I would encourage everyone to have patience with the council as we proceed with city business.
Question, did you say he was charged because he hasn't been charged?
He was charged.
No, he hasn't.
According to my statements.
No, he was arrested but not charged, according to his lawyer he checked today. So he hasn't been charged yet.
I'm just going off of the information I received from the sheriffs. But it's where there's so many details involved with this that we all have our opinions and everybody's entitled to discuss city leaders and their opinion of them. But the council chamber is not the place to go over details of what occurred or did not occur. That being said, it is important and I encourage everyone to approach this with an open mind and to be willing to make the difficult decisions that they feel necessary. So that being said, I would very much like to welcome for our special presentations and announcements, Siskiyou Reads' proclamation about child literacy. Do we have a representative today?
Karen Potts and Steve Bryan.
Thank you, Matthew. This is Karen Potts, the executive director from First Five Siskiyou, and I'm Stephen Bryan, the director here at the Dunsmere Community Resource Center.
Thank you, Steve. First and foremost, I just want to thank each one of you for your unwavering support. I know Bruce and Peter have been part of the efforts in Dunsmere for many, many years and you have been the cornerstone for the success of this community. And you, as a city council, are a model to all the other city councils of the importance of supporting the community members through community-based programs and services. So thank you. Budgets are statements of value and you've certainly demonstrated that in your investments of the resources that you have. So thank you, thank you very much for that. So what we're here for today is what is very well-known in your community and in other communities. This is our 14th year of investing in programs and services to improve the literacy of the children in our communities. And some of you may know Dr. Steve Pearlman, who passed away not two, several years ago now. He was the health officer for the county and First Five Commissioner, who saw the importance of putting more books in the hands of more children in our community and challenged us and encouraged us to start the Read Across Siskiyou a day where 2,000 children in our county receive the same book and are read the same book by those who care about children in our communities and their families so that we can show the importance of daily reading on child's future success. So with your support, we'd love for you to consider adopting the proclamation and also becoming guest readers. I know Peter and Bruce are already signed up, but anyone else, the police, the law enforcement and this new city manager or anyone who's interested. It doesn't have to be just this month, it could be any month or anytime that you'd like to. Each year, we give 30,000 books to children in our community, including the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library program. And the more people that children see read, the more people that model the importance of reading and social connections, the more successful we are and the more quickly we break those cycles of undesirable life outcomes for our future. Finally, what I'd like to share is we all know that children, what we do with children and what we do with our communities, families today, has a direct impact on the prosperity of our communities. So if each one of us can, there, I see nodding. If we could continue to nod and continue to invest our time and resources and support in prevention, we're more likely to have the kinds of successes and prosperity that we want to see in our communities. The number one way to predict the future of the community is to see how children are doing at kindergarten, see how children are doing at third grade and in the early years of life. And we have an influence on that in addition to their families. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here and thank you for the consideration to adopt the proclamation.
Thank you so much. If people want to get involved, what's the best way to do that?
They can absolutely visit the Resource Center, of course, for this event. But then you're welcome to reach out to us directly, the contact is on there somewhere. But really, the best thing to do is connect with Steve and the team at the Resource Center and they always know how to get in touch with us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to know, is there an opportunity you could take right now to talk to the people about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library? Because I think that's something that also has to go along with this, right?
Absolutely. So everyone knows Dolly, right? And everybody knows Dolly, right? So here's how children in our community know Dolly. One example, one of many. A mom came and knocked on our door this weekend for Halloween and she said, "You told us about Dolly Parton's Imagination Library and my daughter is four." And the other day she saw Dolly on TV and she came and she said, "Mom, mom, my library lady is on TV." So Dolly Parton is known as the library lady for the children in our community. How many of you know a child that receives a book from Dolly in their home? That's great. So thank you. So thanks to a partnership with Delta Kappa Gamma and community members who donate and organizations and city councils and others who contribute. Rotary, that's right, rotary, absolutely. Who contribute, every, we have over 1,200 children in Siskiyou County who benefit from receiving a book from Dolly every single month, from the time that they register, oftentimes at birth, all the way to their fifth birthday. And it's basically, it's one of the best investments that we've made through First Five. It's $25 per child and First Five covers all the administrative costs so that every penny that's tax deductible, that's donated by all of you. Thank you, Bruce, for being an unwavering supporter, goes directly to purchasing a book for a child, or 12 books for a child per year. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment, I just want to mention that my sister has been an early childhood educator for 25 years.
Oh.
And that's long enough to see the difference in the children, many of the children's lives that she's made. So I've seen it firsthand, so I want to thank you and everybody that's involved in these programs because I've seen it make a difference.
That's great, thank you so much. Does she live here and does she want a job?
Juneau.
Oh, Juneau, okay. Thank you so much, that means a lot.
Gentlemen, if you're in agreement, if you'd like to come up here, we have the proclamation to support.
Oh, thank you.
And we have, did everybody get the books?
Yes, I'll go read it tonight.
I think you should come read it to Congress.
I can read it in my native language, no problem, which is our meaning.
I'm sorry, what's your last name?
My last name is, my husband was in Spots.
Okay. I thought, yeah, got you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just do a quick plug too. Expecting families can sign up ahead of time for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library too. They don't have to wait until the child is already born. And you could get forms and registration at the Resource Center, we'd be glad to sign anybody up that's interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, we have a second special presentation tonight from Siskiyou Economic Development. The man himself in person, thank you so much for all the work this last year.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, it is, it's great to be here in person.
That's what you look like, huh?
Yeah, I am here in the flesh, so I've been here virtually many a time. I do want to follow up that I'm here to talk about economic development. Economic development is very much so downstream from early childhood investments. If you want to look at what investments pound for pound produce more economic growth for our nation, for our society. Education, especially in that one through five year frame. I mean, I wish people would think about investing in that the way they think about investing in Tesla or Bitcoin because if we really want to go to the moon, it's our kids. So, thank you guys. So I am here on behalf of my whole organization, so just one of many, well, sort of many, nine or 10 of us. So I sort of would like to go over what exactly we do, what we've accomplished this year and what we're looking forward to the future. So Blake, if we want to do this like blackjack rules, I can, if you want to hit me. So this is just some of our teammates that you'll may see frequently. Some of them have other obligations, so I'll be doing the tourism aspect as well today. But we've got our executive director, Tanya, myself, Heather and Alia, who have been working real close with the City of Dunsmere, and Cory as well. So all of you have a handful, a few different handouts in front of you. I've given you guys a couple files and so we'll go through those as we proceed. So this slide here sort of encapsulates what our work is and what we do. So I'll try to walk you through it. So it all starts with our jurisdictions who so kindly provide funding for us. And we do leverage that funding against a whole slew of different grant programs, whether it be through the EPA, where we do brownfield cleanup work throughout the county, the USEDA, where we do pure economic development work, or through Community Development Block Grant, where we try to identify programs to really help and benefit our low to moderate income residents. So from there, we also do a lot of work in business attraction. We'll be on this slide for a minute, Blake. And so a lot of our work with business attraction is working directly with the state, with the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. So just in this past quarter, we've responded to three requests for information and what these are, we call them RFIs, is basically the state is working with some company, some business that's looking at move at California and they're looking for either a plot of land that's listed on any acres that has access to rail or highway, or we're looking for a mill site or a bottling plant or things like that. And so we respond to those and provide some of the assets that we have in Siskiyou County to attract businesses. Business development, that's a huge cornerstone of my work. So we just recently rebid and was awarded another five-year contract to host the Siskiyou County Small Business Development Center. This is where a lot of my work gets done individually within the Economic Development Council. So we work one-on-one with businesses all throughout the county. That's a huge component of our work. It leads to job creation, it leads to further investments in growth and expansion of businesses. We've got Discover Siskiyou, that's the Tourism Business Improvement District. This is the assessment that goes on all the different lodging properties around the county and it helps us promote and market Siskiyou County across the nation and across the world, actually. We've got a pretty far reach. We do a lot of brownfields work, brownfields are like former mill sites or old torn-up environmentally contaminated sites and we clean them up and we repurpose them. A lot of these are a lot more in North County. One of the more famous ones is the Landing in Mount Shasta. And so these are some of the sites that we work on. And then last but not least, we work on a lot of different shovel, getting project shovel ready. So that's, you know, from the cradle to the grave, doing the feasibility work, doing the assessment work, the planning, and then finally breaking ground. So Blake, if you want to move to the next slide. So a lot of our grant resources that we utilize come from both federal and state partners. The USDA invest significantly in Siskiyou County, the Economic Development Administration. If you've ever driven through South Weed right now on Vista Drive and seen all that construction, that's being funded by the US Economic Development Administration and that was, all that work originated from a grant that we were able to work with the city weed on to break ground on that. A few other examples are some feasibility studies we're doing on some other investments. Infrastructure funding, financing is a big one right now. But what we're going to be looking at in the future with grant funding is how we can really increase affordable and workforce housing. That seems to be really one of the peak challenges throughout our county and every community that we're facing. And one of the things we want to do is we don't want to become Tahoe and neglect that. Next slide, please.
Good question. How with the various grants that have been going around for economic development, the ones coming up for infrastructure and et cetera, COVID, do you see those as some potential areas where we could tap into resources?
Absolutely, and the federal government has kind of gotten a little ahead of itself in promoting some of the Build Back Better agenda and the infrastructure plan. I know there's a lot of changes and things going on in Washington right now that may affect ultimately what gets funded and what doesn't get funded. But we've been in real close contact with our economic development representative, her name's Melinda Mattson, on what projects could be feasible, how we could use funds to really streamline investments in some high priority developments like broadband. That's a huge one. So we are exploring that, but a lot of it is still kind of up in the air because of Washington. So, but we keep an eye on it, we do. Business attraction, so this is one that has definitely taken a hit during COVID. There's definitely a lot less developers that have been reaching out and looking for commercial sites until things kind of have sorted themselves out. But we have seen in especially the past six months, a big uptick and I wouldn't say a return to normal, but kind of a close return to normal, where developers are reaching out and they're asking us data, like, you know, "How many tourists are coming through? What are your credit card transactions in this jurisdiction?" You know, trying to identify how far your tax base really extends, especially in a place like Wairika, where even though it's the largest city, it's got a little more reach because it's the county seat, for example. So developers have been expressing more interest as of late. Next slide on business development. So this is the favorite part about my job is actually going to work with individual businesses and I can say, over the last year, a lot of this work was driven by impacts from COVID. So that's helping folks out apply for relief funds, whether it be PPP or the Cal Relief Grant. I came down here a few weeks ago and was able to help two Dunsmere businesses get the Cal Relief Grant right in the last minute and thanks to the city hall for letting me scan their tax documents and get all that uploaded in their things. That was real clutch. A big problem, though, was a lot of folks just didn't know how to access these funds and didn't know that we were available to work, to help. And so we still have funds available, there are still, you know, options for folks, but if I'm going to be honest, the number one problem facing businesses right now is finding people to work. Maintaining employment levels has been the biggest challenge since the summer. We thought with the vaccination rollout, it would be like a strong snapback and everybody would be re-engaged, it hasn't been the case. When unemployment payments subsided and we also thought that may have been the case, it ended up not being the case as well. So there is a great turnover, a great reassessment in work that's going on nationwide. I was on the East Coast a few weeks ago in DC and in Southern Georgia and you see Help Wanted signs everywhere, it doesn't matter where you go. And Siskiyou is not immune to this, unfortunately. This year, we've helped 151 businesses. Out of those 151 businesses, they were able to secure $9.4 million in capital. Some of this is padded because of relief funds, but a lot of it is also, you know, significant investments in growth and expansion. And we were able to help create 97 jobs. So that's our report from the last fiscal year. Moving on from that, on the next one, I'll get into Discover Siskiyou. And I do have to preface, I don't actually work directly in tourism, but I've got some solid figures coming that I'll report. The first thing I want to talk about, I gave you guys all a little field guide. So the ladies at the tourism department generated those. If you go to the second, yep, the second or third page, you'll have Dunsmere on that. These will go into those, if you ever go to a hotel or some kind of tourist place, you see all the rack cards of do this, do that, you know, waterfalls or tours or hiking guides. So they'll go there and each page has things to do for different cities. So sort of a pilot that they're running on that one. Another thing I gave you guys is we're bringing back the local initiatives program. And how this works is if you guys are having any kind of event that will drive overnight tourism, Discover Siskiyou will provide one-for-one in-kind match to help promote it, to market for it. Currently, the City of Dunsmere has 3,000 available for that. The amount is determined based on how much T-Bid funds are generated within that jurisdiction. But we really want to use them, you know, they can be used to book talent, for marketing, for artwork, branding, stuff like that.
Is that this initiative here?
Yes, sir, yep.
So it's not the City of Dunsmere, but all the small cities that aren't the three larger than?
Yeah, I think they all get pulled together for that little fund, yeah. I would imagine Mount Shasta takes the bulk, if my T-Bid math is right. But it is matched, that's in-kind and it's really for events that are going to drive what they call heads in beds, you know, events that will bring people to stay in your local hotels.
Nothing else for us that would probably group us, but yeah, thank you.
That could be an example, I was gonna, the one I had on mine was the Derby, things like that. But yeah, they can be flexible with how they are used. But it is an in-kind match, so that's sort of how they got around the T-Bid rules. Like they can't just issue checks because of the way the funding is structured. Some updates on advertising. They ran this campaign called the Expedia Campaign. And so I'll run you some of the numbers. They partnered with Expedia, which is this booking firm, on promoting Siskiyou-specific things and they ran it from April through June. What this led to, in the City of Dunsmere itself, it led to 144 nights of booking, which led to $18,000 of revenue. And they can trace that to the clicks from the folks. Countywide, it led to 1,700 rooms and $266,000 in revenue. So we're likely going to do this again next summer. But what has been interesting is if, you know, as a Siskiyou resident, this summer was a little weird. It started getting smoky in June and then July and then August and then September. And one of the downstream effects of this is that our shoulder seasons are starting to become a little more popular. A little more folk coming in springtime and in fall time. Part of this is consequence of places like Tahoe filling up. Part of it is consequences that we're facing as a part of climate change, unfortunately. So there are many booking, many lodges and other hospitality-based businesses that did have to adapt to this in a way and for many firefighters, you know, saved their summer. So this was a significant challenge and if the drought persists and if the effects of climate change persist in forest fires here, it can be difficult in the next years. So that's something we should be cognizant of. Last but not least is the Community Development Block Grant programs we have going on right now. So this one says CV, but I also want to just fill you in on some of the pipeline stuff. So the City of Dunsmere did apply for a CDBG planning grant that's to be used. The intent of it is to look at whether a business improvement district could be a feasible idea and some retail recruitment and the chief goal is addressing some of those downtown vacancies. So that one is still pending, we haven't been notified of any kind of award or changes requested or anything, but we've got that one in the pipeline. We are currently accepting applications still for the CV program, the CDBG CV program. So what this grant program does is it provides up to $20,000 for microenterprises. So those are businesses with five or fewer employees and they have to have demonstrated losses from COVID. If they don't, we can tie it to job creation. So that's sort of my workaround. So let's say if a new business comes and they're opening up and they might be interested. Even though they didn't suffer an economic impact from COVID, they are helping the community plan and rebuild from it and if that leads to job creation, we can meet that nexus and we can get them funded for that as well. The application for that is found at siskiucounty.org/recovery. And it can be a little onerous, but we do have staff that, myself included, that are available to help folks. So far, we've fully funded eight businesses, three have received checks, five are pending. We've got about eight businesses that are sort of in a holding phase right now. They've got some outstanding things to complete, such like tax returns. Some people had extensions on those or they just need to get their finances together or things like that. Last but not least, the Siskiyou, or not Siskiyou, the Dunsmere Micro Enterprise Program is also open now. And so we have accepted the first application for that one and are in the process of underwriting it right now. This program is more directed towards the growth and expansion of existing businesses and startup businesses. So there doesn't need to be any COVID nexus whatsoever. And the way we want to look at these funds is the city's got a fund that it can use to invest in businesses. And so my job is to act as a fiduciary for the city and in some ways, an investor for the city and to really work with businesses that can use these funds to meet a concrete growth and expansion. And even if it's little, even if it's something as small as adding a single employee or adding a few thousand dollars to their annual sales or just improving some furniture or paint job, we can be as flexible to folks as they want. And that's a three-year program. When it gets to 50%, we can ask for more money from the state and kind of keep it going. And the way I'd like to look at it is, you know, another incentive to do business in Dunsmere. And then with that, I am available to take any questions about our work and where we're going and any comments or concerns that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brendan. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
And there is starting to be some application activity in Dunsmere and thank you for helping for the applicants. Let's do, well, first of all, I saw the same thing on your handout. It looks like the City of Dunsmere is excluded from the available amounts because we're not a small city. The small cities are defined. So what I understand is if we were shown on this first page, we would have $3,000 available?
I believe that's what I was told. Like I said, I don't directly work in T-Bid, so I'm relaying, but I can always follow up. but I can always follow up with emails as well on some of these questions.
So if we go to, if we walk through some of our suspended events, railroad days being one that definitely has traditionally been a week long. At one time it was a five-day celebration. Now it's sort of struggling to be a week-long one. For whoever puts on railroad days in 2021, if they can raise $3,000, they could go and get 3,000 more?
Yeah. And the way it work, it, it, so it's going to be in kind. So for example, what that means is either it's going to be, um, uh, adding on to existing ad campaigns that are already out like digitally, for example. Or let's say, um, Discover Siskiyou has, uh, uh, deals with a couple, or contracts with a couple of firms that produce brands and create images. Like this logo, for example, things like that, where they might be able to, um, uh, let's say your logo costs a thousand dollars. Um, but we use our contracted firm where the, um, the, the group organizing the event puts in 500, Discover Siskiyou puts in 500. And then it creates a brand or a campaign to promote the event, something like that.
Okay. So you, you don't, um, give them a check to run the event or?
No, no. Yeah.
It's still very helpful to, uh, increase the advertising.
Yeah. And, and that's explicitly because of the T-Bid rules. So like, we looked at every angle to kind of get around that. And that was the, the one legal route they had to be able to do this.
And to even get in the queue for that, someone has to fill out a local initiatives application?
Correct. Yeah. And that would be reviewed by Discover Siskiyou staff and then either approved or sent back for revision or further detail. Um, and, um, if you have any questions further on that, the, the person who's managing that, her name's Heather Dodds. You can reach her at heather@siskiucounty.org. Um, and she'll be able to speak a lot more intelligibly to that program than I can.
My questions are more internally. Who is that laboring board going to be?
Well, you have your hood, I would imagine.
And what's the timeframe?
And one, one more question. Are you currently accepting applications for, for this program?
I should have done a little more homework to ask. Um, I can, I can follow up with an email further on.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then a question I had, um, so you have someone who, uh, doesn't have a business yet, um, but they're loosely interested in starting a business. They're thinking about it. Do you have resources that could help them develop a business plan? Or are you more just once they have a business plan, you do underwriting for the city?
No, this is where I roll up my sleeves. So I have, I, I, uh, through the SBDC, we, we can provide technical assistance. And so
Other programs besides the CDBG?
Correct. Cause, cause, cause I really want to be not stingy. I want to be very careful with how I use CDBG dollars because they're limited. Whereas we're already an established working SBDC. So if I can log my hours with a client, working with them on a business plan to SBDC instead of CDBG, I'm going to. Um, it just, it makes more sense from a budgetary sense.
So as long as between the other programs and CDBG, we have enough, you'll help someone develop a business plan within reason, you know?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. So we don't write it for them. We provide coaching and, you know, I will review and I will, I will note the heck out of it. Um, uh, and we really, you know, for, for new businesses in particular, I think a lot of them can see this, oh, I can get some money to start my business. Sort of, I, I want to look at a couple of months of cash flow first. I want to make, the, the way the underwriting works is that it has to be a feasible venture, um, uh, without CDBG funds. It's got to be able to function. We want to see this as like the cherry on top. Um, so if it's a completely new business, I want to make sure that they've got cash flow management. I want to make sure that, um, their, their debt service coverage ratio, even though we're issuing this as grants and not loans, I want to make sure that meets a certain threshold before I fund it, because otherwise it's going to be too high risk. So, um, a, a lot, uh, uh, people could get easy and see like, oh, I can finally build a business now that these funds are available. They're still going to need a little skin in the game, um, first for it to be economically feasible.
So it must be better for people that already have a business in concept, but, um, you could help them access funds to expand.
And it's a case by case, but I'll give you a, an, an example, um, uh, cause I'm working with a business in Weed who's doing this. Um, let's say a business owner is starting a food truck and they've invested, they've got $60,000 and they invested and purchased a food truck. But they could really use a lot of extra stuff on top of that, like a POS system, a, a low boy. It's what we call, I used to cook for a living. So a little refrigerator with drawers and stuff in it. Um, uh, uh, some sort of a credit card reader, things like that. That's really where we're going to be looking at CDBG for that example, because they've already, you know, they've already got so much skin in the game that it's like, all right, this is, you know, a little less risk. And we can also do step up things where, you know, let's start you off with a couple thousand dollars and wait six months and see how it goes and then do a larger investment after that. Um, once a person is qualified and eligible for the program, they're eligible for three years. And so we really want to work close hand in hand with them, providing technical assistance and financial assistance. If you just cut them a check and say, good luck, it's not going to be a successful program.
Well, thank you so much. I really hope to get that.
I was quite done.
Yeah.
The, uh, business attraction, business development, you mentioned the landing in Mount Shasta. As you know, we have an airport, um, a significant amount of acreage, a lightly-used regional airport that doesn't support itself. And everybody has an idea. Electric helicopters coming from Google, potentially housing, potentially green waste disposal, potentially cannabis greenhouses, this and this and this. But we don't have the staffing or really the bandwidth to pursue any of those.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's my thought that if we could retain a consulting firm to do an assessment, possibility, probability, then marketing, that might be a good step for the city of Dunsmere and the region.
Yeah. My, um,
Can you help us?
Yeah. My, my suggestion on that one is what's called the, the Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. It's offered through the EDA. So this is the, this is the program that's funding, um, the feasibility study that's currently going on at the landing right now. And the way, what's really nice about this EDA funding is it's designed to be cradle from the grave. So you can get a grant for your feasibility to see, all right, what the heck can we even do here that will work? Then you can get a grant for the planning and, and, you know, really comprehensively take that out. Um, they do have match components. Um, so that's, you know, where the, where the city puts its skin in the game. But it can pretty much make these budgets 90, 100% contractual. Um, this is the most flexible grant that I work with easily. Um, and it's also the same grant that led to the, um, all that infrastructure development in South Weed right now. It's the same program. So you can, you can, and, and if you got that first grant for it, that second one's going to be more competitive because EDA is already invested in it. And heck, if they've already invested in feasibility and planning, you're pretty much a shoe-in for the, for the brick and mortar, for the actual.
Is that federal dollars or state?
That's federal dollars. Correct.
And we talked to you about that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep you here all night. You're very inspiring to us.
And, and real quick, somebody on the chat did post a link for the local initiatives, uh, link there. And it, there was a first application window from November 1st to December 31st. And then another window, if funding is available from March 1st to April 30th.
So just that question was answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were we set to see a movie? Do you want to watch it?
Uh, yeah. So this is, um, I completely forgot about this. So we're partnering with Visit California on these, um, on these commercial campaigns. It's, uh, what if is, is what they do. And, um, I actually saw these when I was in DC, which was pretty cool. They're currently running on Amazon and Hulu right now. And this was, uh, this was created by Siskiyou County's own pusher. Um, so, uh, yeah, Blake, whenever you're ready. This is, this is our advertisement to come to Siskiyou.
I don't know if, uh, video or audio will work, so it's just. Rendering slowly up. So I'm sure Zoomers saw that a lot faster than on our screen here.
Yeah, it's always hard to do it over, over Zoom. I can also follow up and send everyone a link because we posted it on Vimeo as well. But it's basically sandwiched with the main California one and they're airing this, um, mostly out of state right now. But yeah, you can find them on Amazon and Hulu.
That's amazing.
And it's a, yeah, it's a, it's, it looks a lot better when it runs seamlessly. I promise.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, thank you so much, Brendan.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
So now let's move into general public comment for this evening. Announce the opportunity for the members of the public, um, either on Zoom or here present, uh, to come up. You can speak for three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Um, it, just a reminder, um, it's not a back and forth. Uh, you comment. Uh, if you have questions, you can ask them, of course. Um, at the very end, um, if staff or council, um, feels necessary to, um, appropriate to, to comment or clarify, we will at that point. Um, but if anyone would like to make a comment, uh, please come up to the podium.
Hello, Steve Bryan again with the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. I just wanted the community to know that coming up on November 18th, Thursday, 5:00 PM at the Dunsmere Community Building, we're doing our annual what's on your plate event. Um, the Dun, as the director here at the Dunsmere Community Resource Center, I'm the head of the Dunsmere Community Care Team, which involves Rotary, City Council, Sheriff's Department, City Management, um, high school, elementary school, public health, um, the library, the clinic, you name it. We have a, a large group of caring organizations working together to support the community. Our what's on your plate event is where we give out free turkeys and hams to those in need for Thanksgiving. We're also this year stepping it up. Um, we're not able to do in-person dining again yet, but Rotary and the high school have agreed to, um, uh, make and support a hot meal to go. So we'll have a spaghetti dinner with salad and rolls to hand out also. And we're going to be putting together informational packets for the community on all the available resources that are available to them, whether it's food, um, healthcare, uh, utility assistance, rental assistance, childcare, um, parenting classes, any, anything and everything that's pertinent to this community to help strengthen it and, um, keep it going in the right direction. At the resource center, we always like to say, we're not giving a handout, we're giving a hand up. And this is just one more way that we're accomplishing that. So with the city's support, of course. So thank you.
Mr. Podium, and, uh, if you're on Zoom, go to the reactions tab and hit the raise your hand reaction and we'll put you in line for public comments as well.
Hi, Alison Lyshevsky, River Avenue. Good to see everybody tonight. Um, just making a brief, uh, announcement here. I hope folks in town got down to Talendali Park. Um, it's just looking great. Um, I, I'm, I'm just so excited about it. Um, we have new benches, new tables, uh, all with the city of Dunsmere logo and dedications, uh, to folks in town and interpretive panels throughout the park and new bear-proof trash cans. And in the spring, uh, we'll be putting some public art on the wastewater pump station. So I'm really excited. And I want to once again thank, uh, Brian Wilson, Todd Uhas, Blake Michelson, Wendy Perkins, uh, the Rotary, uh, the Dunsmere Rotary, specifically Will Newman, Wendy Groshal, uh, Jack Hailing, the Botanical Gardens, the Dunsmere Wreckin' Park District, and every member of this board. Um, you folks really saw this from, from the beginning, um, the council. So, uh, thank you so much. And, um, if anyone in town wants to talk about, uh, keeping up the momentum, uh, with civic engagement and community, uh, involvement, uh, please talk to me. Um, I have some other ideas in store as to what we can do together. Thank you.
Alison, would you stick around?
Yes.
I see a hand raised on Zoom.
Yeah, Sandra.
I just want to say something. Can you, I mean, just? Sandra Hood?
Hi, uh, Sandra Hood, 6235 Hill Street. Uh, this year I was handed the folder for Candle in the Canyon. And, um, it's a late start. We're not sure exactly what we will have. Hopefully we'll definitely have Santa and Mrs. Claus. I'm having a quick meeting next Thursday. Uh, eight, nine, 10, 11. It'd be the 12, November 12th, I think. That, um, at 6:00 PM at the Dunsmere Chamber office. Anybody who would like to help, we're going to need a tree. We're going to need help decorating the tree. Um, I realize it's short notice, so some things will just have to be pared down. Um, hopefully the resource center will be able to be involved. Uh, we are making some calls, but if you'd like to help, please do so. You can also call me at 530-515-8005. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. If anyone else would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium or hit the raise your hand in the reactions tab. I don't see any. Any on Zoom? All right. I'll now close the general public comment for this evening and proceed with staff and council comments. Um, thank you, Lieutenant Krzyz for being here tonight. Did you have any comments?
I don't. Thank you guys for, uh, continued support of law enforcement and city government.
Thank you. Appreciate your presence here. Blake?
Yeah, nothing, no, nothing big. Yep.
Turn it over to our new, uh, city manager.
We're going to update the council on a few things. First, in your packets, uh, at the pre-agenda meeting with, uh, Mayor Brian and, um, council member Art, they, um, had asked me to look at the city council protocols, which I wasn't aware of, and then asked that I share those with, um, the city council here as well. So I distributed that to everybody. Looks like, um, they were adopted a couple of years ago in August. I also, um, distributed a list of city-owned properties by the city of Dunsmere. You can see the source there and everything else. So I want to draw that to your attention. And then, uh, I included the current org chart for the budget that was most recently adopted. And that's something that we'll need to, um, revisit and should be quick and easy, but wanted to bring it to your attention here in the next couple of months, future year, especially as, um, we bring a public works director on board.
And so it's been asked you about, does that move along?
We're in negotiation. Yep. Yeah. Uh, I would also like to, uh, thank especially Public Works, Water Works, and our wastewater and water staff. Um, I think they've been working under some very strange situations because of a lack of staff that we have in filled positions. So today I just wanted to recognize those folks for the effort to keep our water going, keep the toilets flushing and keep our garbage cans clean. So thanks to everybody for that. Um, Alison mentioned the park. I stopped down there on Friday and it looks fantastic. She named everybody that, uh, I would name again. Thank you so much for all the work. It looks great. I would like to mention that, uh, there will be, uh, construction going on on the I-5 bridge this summer. So the park will be closed for a number of months. So folks will have an opportunity to enjoy other areas, but I wanted to bring that to people's attention, um, at this time. Uh, let's see. Moss Brae, give you a quick update on that. It's about down with the 30% design phase, if you're familiar with 30, 60, 90. So basically they feel that they've all but eliminated any of the major, um, design issues that may come, come about. And they're looking for who wants to be lead agency, um, for CECL and, and the other documents. And they're talking about fishing wild, so that's updated on Moss Brae. Um, Butterfly looking, uh, reaching out for tribal consultation on that one, just to let you know. So that design looks good. And I'll have some, uh, pictures of, uh, the Butterfly Bridge in that area a little bit, um, later. Children's Park, still in negotiation, but hopefully that'll be closed pretty soon. And, um, this was brought to my attention today. Building fees have not been updated since 2006. So those valuations on residential properties, one might have changed in the last 15 years. So, uh, I will probably put that as a potential future agenda item for the council, but they're 15 years out of date, um, for that. Um, the library roof, there was some discussion at the last meeting about more information. There's some more information on materials from one of them, from one of the, um, folks. Uh, I went down there. I went down there two Fridays ago because there was a massive leak. And I would suggest that it would be fruitful for the council to discuss that there will be structural damage that needs to be taken care of and to figure out how the council would like to address that. SCORE, Small Cities Organized Risk Effort. Woo! Our self-insured or joint powers authority, we went for a couple of days. And what I would share is surprise, the insurance business is doing very well. Thank you. If anything, premiums and deductibles will both be going up. Coverages will be changing and some programs, depending on what you look at, but one of the programs has made the deductible on police vehicles $50,000. So they're essentially saying, we don't want to insure these things at all. So there's some interesting changes that are going on with that. We had a Siskiyou Economic Development kind of quarterly meeting, right? Last week in McLeod. And the PhD, Dr. Thunberg, informed us that the economy is fully recovered, that, let's see, we're doing great. There is no real estate bubble. There is a labor market problem and total restructuring that's going on right now nationwide, and that inflation is a worry. And with that, I want to jump into a quick presentation. I have a couple of slides that involve city-owned properties and then some pictures. Two Sundays ago, the Sacramento River had its record-high event. 1958 was the previous high at 3,850 cubic feet per second. It beat it by 1,000 on Sunday. So I went out and took some pictures, and I've thrown them in here. There's TD Park, Talendali Park there, and one of the benches, that's not text that I added. There's the Simpson Avenue Bridge there, right below it, during the record flow in the lower river down the delta. So what you can see is obviously not even high water conditions here. The reservoir is empty. You didn't have a rain-on-snow event. It was really easy to look at this and go, oh, well, Dunsmere gets flooded when the reservoir's full and it's a rain-on-snow event. So there's, there are the warning signs. But here's what it looked like at Simpson Avenue and then looking down river from there. Go ahead. There is, looking back up at the I-5 Bridge, looks a little fuller, you know, there at the bend as you turn straight south down there. And so starting right here is one property the city owns. If you take that street and the bend and the river and you go all the way down to the bridge, between that road and the river, that's city-owned property. So there's an opportunity to look at simple and inexpensive ways, I think, to improve people's use of those areas and access to the river. Go ahead.
So you're talking about mini parks, essentially?
Yeah. Or just having some kind of amenities there that assist in people enjoying and accessing the river as it goes. As you can see, people are already doing that. Someone's put their own bench in there that they carved out and chained. That may be a sign if we put any facilities, we may want to be careful. But that's somebody's own handiwork they've done there. Going down river a little more and jumping down to the bridge there, see what the river looks like. And the area right around there has quite a bit of space. Go ahead to the next couple of pictures. However, there's some use by the neighbors of that area. So this is city-owned property, area to park cars, area to access the river there right next to the bridge. Here's Butterfly Bridge, right after you walk across from downtown. If you look left upstream, that's what it looks like. There are about, what, four or five houses that are up on the right there. I think that's a great opportunity for a park that people can access from the downtown area, you know, that's along the river, that would draw people down. And I think that's a real amenity for any town is to have a park, you know, seen and accessed from downtown area. So a couple more pictures of just that little area. You can see someone's put in a bench, you know, and is already enjoying that area right below. Now, the next picture, we're actually going downstream, down Butterfly Avenue. And before you get to the bend, in the river where the push is up right against the wall, this is city-owned property as well. And it actually cuts back up along the river behind the last two or three residential par, residentially owned parcels there. So there's quite good access. People are using to park it, park there and access the river. Here's the bend that I mentioned, right as we get there. So here is, quote, low water on the bend. Some people enjoying it there. Their dog was actually swimming out in the pool. I've been down there. People are fishing, of course, but go ahead to the next one. The next one is the record-high event in the Sacramento River. That's what it looked like there at the bend. Doesn't look like anything. The water's a little bit higher. So we'll go downstream around that bend, which people are utilizing as a park now. There's a garbage can there, couple of cars parked, obviously lots of room there to access the river. This is what the river looks like, just peeking sort of over through the bushes there in part of the area. Go ahead. Here's what, Bridge Street, I think, Bridge, looking there at the high-water flow event. And then I'm just jumping down river here to see what the lower river looks like. There's Simpson, looking, or Sims, looking down from Sims Flat from the bridge, what it looks like. And Slate Creek, river keeps getting bigger and bigger. We can see where all the water's coming from. And then, did we lose it all? Yeah, there's a video. There's a couple of videos that won't play. I had one of the very bottom of the river down there below, just above Delta. But anyway, those properties, starting from the first bend with the picture of I-5 and along there, I think there's one opportunity just above the bridge. Another one is Butterfly. And then as you head down to the bend, there's an area there and then around. So what I would like to do is continue, I'll keep looking into this and try and identify some sort of low-cost ways that we can do that, come back to the council for some kind of action, if we want to keep pursuing that or give some.
Does that agree with you?
Yeah, it raises a lot of questions. Labor, money, responsibility, shared jurisdiction, the development of the Talendali area. And I know Rotary does some monitoring and policing, the most popular fishing spots. So I'm certainly not opposed to it, but I see it as a lower priority.
Do you have research? Yeah. On that, and clearly, we wouldn't be able to take on all of those amazing spots all at once at the same degree, but yeah. Do you have anything further than that?
That'll be it.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to go first tonight for council comments, just because I have a couple of questions that came up throughout this. Is there still going to be Veterans Day parade?
No. They don't have any more veterans that are trained in doing the honor guard. And the two that they do have can't do parades because they're too old. So I'm going to be working with the McLeod detachment and try to come up with some people around here that could help staff an honor guard for South County. So I'll be working on that, but we don't have any way to pull it off right now without that.
And then as far as public comment goes, if we're still on Sandra Hood. Last year, I was able to organize a ski park, donated a tree, it needed to be thinned. I can certainly help facilitate that again this year if you get in touch with me. I think that's all I have for tonight. Councilman Bush?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to officially welcome our new incoming city manager, Jeff Spencer. And remind people that may not have heard this, but two years ago, when we did a city search, a search for city manager, we ended up with two finalists, and one of them was Todd and the other one was Jeff. So in a way, we have an opportunity right now to take advantage of his skills. And I should say that as he was talking about the parks, it reminded me of what his major background is, and that is in planning. So I can see the planning and the planner in him, starting to reach out, want to work his hands on that, and I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to say was, and I asked Allison to stay behind, because I think that it's really easy with the way the flow goes, for people not to really realize the incredible special effort that Allison put on. This was a situation where a person came up and looked at a large project with a grand vision, and that is one part of being a leader and making things happen. But the person that can also take that and make it all happen, pull together all the resources, bring the money, get the people, that's something really special, and that's Allison. And I just hope that the community in general realizes how special it was what you did at Talendali Park. Thanks.
All right. Councilman Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, colleagues, colleague. It was a perfect fall afternoon last Friday, and many of us, including Shereen, were at the community garden for the dedication of the Ann Powers Bench in the morning. And then we had a harvest festival with kids' games, a final gleaning of what's still left in the garden, music by Tim Holt and Sandra Hood, and just a beautiful, beautiful afternoon. So I think we did Ann Powers proud, we did the community proud, and thanks for all of those who made that happen. Another word on the protocols, I did in our pre-agenda meeting ask that they be resurfaced, and they need to be cleaned up. I assume even a moderate reading, you'll still see the City of Mount Shasta in one paragraph. That's where our protocols came from. But grammatically, they're a little rough. They need to be cleaned up. But if you read them, you'll realize we're not doing that good a job of following them. If you look at the section, for instance, on how the council and the city manager interact with the city attorney, we're not following that practice at all. So what I'd hope, Mr. Mayor, is that we could spend 30 minutes at one of our future meetings, November, December, with the cleaned-up version. Do we want to change it? Do we want to junk it? Or do we want to recommit to it and follow it? And I think that's all I have. Oh, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Let's move on to committee reports. Are there any committees that met? Except from, where am I?
Well, I, we had an excellent solid waste committee meeting. And if I understand Chair Lukeyzi, this is no longer an ad hoc committee. This is going to be a standing committee, if I heard her correctly, with the recognition these issues are going to be before every city in the county for the next three years as we use our small community exemption, but at the same time, start to respond to what is in the resolutions in our packet as far as needing to develop the three-can system, our capacity for handling food scraps, reusing food that is still edible, green waste, solid waste. But the committee has come a long ways in working with Clements. We have a multi-year contract, and Diana is on every call. And Todd was with us with the notion, we talked about a number of regional solutions, most particularly involving the City of Mount Shasta and the City of McLeod. So we have a wonderful committee. We want to reach out to the community. We still would welcome a third public member. So if there's anybody that would be interested in what I consider obviously a green initiative, but it starts with the State of California, then the county, then individual cities, I hope you'll join us in making Dunsmere a model community in disposing of our waste. Thank you.
Finance could be attempted to meet, but only one person showed, so we didn't meet.
Then the committee, the ad hoc committee to conduct the search and manage the process of finding the new permanent city manager, did meet, divvied out different research tasks. Mostly, it's been a matter of making some contacts and doing research on what our options may be, whether we do it in-house or what options we may have if we hire a firm that assists. Really occurred there. But I hope to have a concrete plan to bring back to council for direction, hopefully by the first or second meeting in December, if not soon. And on the subject of committee reports, I was contacted by former chairwoman of the DFAC Committee, and they expressed the general sentiment, and there's another member present, that they've lost connection with council, sorry, what they're doing, and want to make sure we're aware and we work together. They'll be coming to our next meeting with a thorough committee report. If we move forward to the approval of the minutes for October 21st, 2021. I move we approve the minutes, October 21st, 2021.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any discussion? See no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. I move we adopt the consent agenda. All right. The consent agenda for tonight, for reference, is the check registry from October 16th through October 29th.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those in favor?
Oh, aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We have no public hearing this evening, so we proceed to old business, item 10. And all we have for tonight is the second reading of Ordinance 572, adoption of planning fees. And don't see our city planner on, which I think is fine because we thoroughly discussed it.
I told him he didn't need to be here, but he's available by phone if we need to ask any questions.
That's a smart move. I think council was pretty well satisfied. Are there any clarifying questions on it?
I guess we need to have a public comment, but I'm willing to make the motion when we're ready.
We definitely need a public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll open this item up. So this is, we're updating our pass-through planning fees. And roughly, we updated them all to be underneath the actual cost, but within about 5% of the actual cost incurred. In some cases, hadn't been updated in 40-some years, and others hadn't been updated since 2003-ish. But anyone would like to come to the podium and comment on the new fee structure? Or if you're on Zoom, go to the reactions tab and hit the raise your hand button. All right. Seeing none. I'm going to close this public comment for this evening and move into council discussion.
Peter, unless you've got something, I'll go ahead and do the motion. Okay? I move that we determine the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guideline section 15061B3, that we waive the second reading of Ordinance 572, and that we adopt Ordinance 572, amending DMC sections 13.04.090, 16.04.080, 17.24.070, and 18.04.090.
Very good.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any discussion of this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries unanimously. All right. The never-ending subject in new business, item A, budget review.
Right. Now the fun.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm concerned that the two members of the finance committee aren't here during this. Could we table this until they're back?
Second. Well, with additional comment.
Okay. But I just think that, yeah.
I would propose, well, finance committee did not meet. Did they have a chance to review this quarter? chance to review this quarter?
Uh, not in this particular format, no.
Uh, well, it is procedure to have finance committee apply their recommendations on this. I, I'm very familiar with the budget, so if the finance committee was not able to meet, on the one hand, I think I could look at this and process it, um, in good faith with financial responsibility, but, uh, if, if the two of you would like to have finance review, I think that's appropriate too.
Well, it's, uh, my big objection is format, and having been at this through the last two city managers, um, I thought staff, finance committee of the city were on the right track with this format, because it's more visual, it's not just page after page of little tiny accounts. So if, for instance, on a quarterly basis, I want to know how the general fund is doing, there's really nothing here that tells me that until I wade through pages of little accounts, and then I see some pluses and some minuses, um, we have a commitment for a 25% reserve. Are we there? Are we below? Are there any trends we should know about? The airport has nothing on your little, uh, things that you are going to talk to us about, but if I look at the airport fund, it's a bunch of minuses and net effect for airport enterprise, if you look at page 31 of the agenda or page 11 of your report, it doesn't even make any sense. I mean, it's two numbers stuck together. So I would prefer, whether finance blesses it or not, if we treat this as a quarterly medical checkup, how is the general fund doing? How are the enterprise funds doing? Are we meeting our reserve targets? And don't make me do the math across the bottom line of numbers, just comparative chart, anything, it was all set up very well here, and I really don't want to go back.
All right, thank you, Councilman Arth, and I have to say, I'm really the one to blame here. I, I love numbers and I love having all the accounts on my fingertips when discussing this. If you feel the same way that maybe the, um, the more narrative format checkup might be more, um, appropriate for council, I think that might be a good idea. And finance committee is the place where we have the time to go through line by line if need be.
Exactly, I agree with, uh, Councilman Arth, and, and I think the important thing is, is that not only does it need to be clear to us, it needs to be clear to any of the members of the public that want to look at it and understand.
But I, I will say in staff's defense, and I'm, I'm responsible for it being all these accounts, because I like to see these when I revisit it, um, everything you need to know, everything is in these accounts, it's not like we're hiding it, but it does take a little bit of work to go through and see how they help put together, so.
See, I think it's appropriate for finance committee, but not for decision makers, the general public.
Well, it's really a, a policy checkup against the realities of our revenues and expenses.
Well, out of mind, I, I move that we table this till the next meeting.
All right, so, uh, move in a second, all those in favor.
Okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll agree to table, um, we'll bring it back after finance had a chance to review and, um, have their input and maybe more narrative form, and I can work with you on that, but.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make the same motion for the next item. Juliana is chair of our committee. And, uh, there are these draft resolutions in our packet.
Well, real quick, um, I just want to make sure, I, I haven't heard from Councilwoman Lukeyzi on whether this is time-sensitive or not, is that why it's on the agenda perhaps?
Yes, if I just want to jump in real quick, and, and this can be changed next meeting as well, but there is a potential time-sensitive thing about who from the city council is going to attend the meeting. So just, if you want, just make a quick motion to say, uh, right now it's, it's the mayor and somebody else as an alternate.
It would be the two people on the solid waste.
Or, or you can do whoever you want, and it can even be amended next weeding, meeting when you want to take the item fully, but I just, in case there was a time-sensitive issue.
On the county records, our representative is Mayor Bryce Craig.
Right.
And the city manager is Mr. Hannigan.
Right.
So we need to update that, we agreed in our committee meeting, we needed to up, great, but we also need to pass these resolutions. That haven't been completed yet. So, you know, one thing is a representative for the meeting, the other is as a member city of the county solid waste team, we're supposed to conform and enact these ordinances that are in the packet.
Or, or just accept to opt into them, their residents, there, there was a resolutions for the JPA.
No, they're not.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I understood, but I, I'm also, you, you are as well versed in as well, and it's, we don't have to discuss those items now either, I don't, I don't have the definitive answers on those. My only discussion piece was just to try and get it to where you designate somebody in case you need to get there before next meeting.
If action needs to be taken for us to be compliant for time-sensitive, you know, for the duration of between now and the next meeting, um, I'm certainly willing to be someone to go there, although I would recommend, we do, do we, do we know that it is time-sensitive or not?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, here's my question, why would it not be the two people that are already working on solid waste?
I agree with that, unless they're unable to travel for whatever reason.
So my knowledge is they're, they're shooting for a meeting at, toward the end of November, so it may not even be time-sensitive for this, the net, if we want to wait until the November 18th meeting.
Do it correctly.
So with that knowledge though, but just, I wanted to throw it out there in case you wanted to place names to be representatives.
And if it says it's the mayor currently, um, you know, I'd be more than 100% if I had you for one meeting, but I'm not versed in the subject.
Yeah, and so it could, like, so as, as Mr. Arth mentioned, the, it, it names the previous mayors and previous city council or, uh, city manager. So I don't know if it's by title or not. So if you wanted to make a name placement now, uh, could be a good idea, but you also have time to wait.
Since we're considering appointing a member that's not even here, be more appropriate.
But we're, we're technically not even a part of the team until we pass the underlying ordinances. So if you look at page 39 of the agenda.
Yeah.
Ordinance number 2021 draft blank.
And so that, yeah, so that, that could be a resolution or an ordinance.
This is supposed to be an ordinance of the city of Dunsmere.
Right.
Opting into the Siskiyou County Integrated Solid Waste Management Regional Agencies Edible Food Recovery Ordinance. The city council of the city of Dunsmere ordains as follows.
Right.
Okay, well, someone on staff has to do this.
As I understand what you're saying, what we need to do is probably bring this ordinance back at the next meeting and pass it, um, or at least the first reading so that we can get it in conjunction, and then at the same time we can name them at the next meeting?
I think so.
Does that make sense?
Well.
And then, and then even, even for, I mean, it could, it potentially might only need to be a resolution, there's still discussion of whether it needs to be an ordinance or a resolution.
It sounds like there's still.
But again, that's, that's still a very deep discussion.
Exactly what's needed here.
That doesn't have to, so, none of that has to happen now, I always just, if you'd like to name people from this council to attend, do so, otherwise.
I'm, I'm happy designating the two people on the solid waste, maybe if it's not premature to the fact that we're not ready to pass a resolution or ordinance in this category, but.
I move that, I move that while we're waiting for the ordinance to be passed or the resolution to be passed, that we, um, put in as our interim members, uh, Councilman Arth and Councilwoman Lukeyzi.
And I would favor council member Lukeyzi and the city manager. Typically, when you look at the other member cities, that's the way they do it.
I'll amend that to say, uh, Councilwoman Lukeyzi and interim city manager Jeff Spencer.
All right, um, I'll second that, let's, uh, open this up to public comment on the off chance that somebody, actually, it probably is somebody who would like to share their opinions. Uh, this is just for the motion of designating, um, the two representatives to go to this meeting. Don't see any on Zoom, then raise your hand. If no one would like to come to the podium, I will close public comment. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous, against? Motion carries unanimously. And that concludes our new business for this evening.
This item will come back next agenda, I hope.
Yeah, I would, I would think so.
Yeah, so, I mean, in that entirety, you guys all have it correct, that it is the city adopts either an ordinance or resolution to opt into, a whole bunch of other resolutions stuff about, about edible food and recycling, but all that will come back.
And, um, it should come back when it's ready to be done. All right. So under future agenda, um, there is a great many things, um, especially if we add the budget discussion. We have listed, um, some things that came up in our pre-agenda, um, this is kind of a new practice, we should probably check it against, um, how we've behaved in the past in the protocols, but, um, it was discussed, um, I think we do have consensus, um, discussing, um, the town hall to foster citizen involvement, kind of prepare the way for future visioning exercise, it was just a dedicated town hall, uh, time for council to listen more than we talk, uh, to the community. And, uh, so I thought we could put it on the agenda in the future to discuss what that would look like, and if council as a whole would like to proceed with that. Additionally, um, it is the new year, so our city manager, um, has requested, uh, he could say about this, we do a little housekeeping, especially in the slow cold months of December again.
Right, along the lines of, um, Councilmember Arth stating in, uh, the protocols that there's lots of things that could be cleaned up, and our code, everybody knows that there's lots of things that could be cleaned up. So I've found in, in other places, it's nice to just have the annual expectation this time of year, that the more simple kind of word changes and adoptions can, can be presented, not, nothing that's too complicated.
And one thing to point out there, I know that, uh, the planning folks are working on, um, a review of the codes for building, so that's in the process, so I'd rather do it.
Speaking to one of the planning folks.
And the new organizational chart, the next item, I, I mentioned I, I sent out the currently adopted budget, but with the public works director coming on board, they want to adopt a new form.
And, um, you know, changes to the organizational chart will be approved by council, uh, the, the wisdom behind how to change it and how that would work best, um, should have a healthy report from staff on, you know, any, any changes anywhere that needs to be made within that, to reflect the reality or improve. Um, library roof, it sounds like we can't afford to wait any longer, um, maybe with the best research we have, let's, um, preside on something the next meeting. Um, I'd also like to propose, if I have your support, gentlemen, that the next meeting, um, we invite, uh, Allison back and present her with the key to the city, uh, for her work.
I love that.
That'd be an appropriate point to celebrate.
Get a little certificate.
I wish we had less chintzy keys to our city, but there you go. Have you seen them?
They gave away to the 97-year-old room. Yeah. Not all keys are metal.
We, uh, we're poor.
All right, um.
I move adjourned.
All right, there's no.
The only other thing, especially after hearing the presentation from Opportunity Siskiyou, is I do think we need to get a presentation by the Parks and Rec District, hopefully a member of their board and their executive director and the Chamber of Commerce. If we're going to do events and have them successful in 2022, especially railroad days coming in June, it's not that far away. It takes money, it takes organizational skill, and if we're going to get anything from our friends to the north, we need to work with them, so who's going to do them?
Well, it's already on the list from the time before, uh, to have a, an item on events, what they could look like in 2020. City manager's working on it, uh, it's up to, the city manager has it prepared. Um, a lot of it has to do with figuring out which entities besides the city, and maybe it needs to be the city, uh, should be the, the primary agency sponsoring these events, but they do need to happen.
I assume under the now adopted public grant program, entities like the chamber and Parks and Recs and the library, Community Resource Center will all be in the queue the first part of 2021, seeking city support for, ever there seeking city support for, and I think we sort of, you know, COVID had us appropriating money without much expectations, and we should get past that.
All right, um, and then on that note, I remember the, uh, the art museum probably could benefit with their second Saturdays.
Sure.
All right, if there's no further agenda items, uh, if you have any others, you can always email them to myself or city manager, and, uh, you know, the future, the way the protocols work, if I remember, but we'll discuss that, we can bring them up, doesn't mean if it's brought up here that it's necessarily, depending on the timing of things, going to end up on the next agenda, but it is in the queue and we'll, we'll come back time allow. All right, um, entertain a motion to adjourn, a move adjourned.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, against?
I want to go home and read my book.
Love the artwork.
Head books.